Yuck. Did they cough? Mics on, cameras on. Ready? Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for March 22nd, 2016. We'll begin with a special order count of decision items. Item number one, 40286BZ, 2212, 129th Street, Queens.
Good morning. Call us with our own applicant.
Good morning. So, I'd like to make a motion to grant, but for a term of 10 years. The original request was for no term. And the reason for that is no CVO was ever obtained, which was one of the conditions. And also, on condition that all activities, including loading, unloading, and parking of trucks and cars must take place within the building, that signs are to be flat, non-illuminated, and comply with the M1 district regulations, that the hours of operation are 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday to Friday, that the property is maintained free of debris and graffiti, and that signage is professionally installed, mounted to the facade. Those were the conditions, also from the community board. So, on that motion... Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oathley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nachanda?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two, 22609BZ, 24 East 13th Street, Manhattan.
Good morning. Jessica Rubenstein, on behalf of Rothkug, Rothkug Inspector.
Good morning. So, for motion to grant? Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oathley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nachanda?
Aye.
Thank you.
Continued hearing items. Item number three, 80248BC, 1346 Beach Channel Drive, Queens.
Jessica Rubenstein, on behalf of Eric Palatnik, PC. I believe the only outstanding issue was the board wanted some clarity regarding the fence. As stated in our cover letter, the entire eastern lot line will be replaced by the six-foot-high white PVC fence that's depicted on drawing Z007. I saw where the board had some confusion. The architect can add a second note in the southeast portion, just saying that the fence will be continued.
Okay. Great. So, are there any speakers on this? Does anybody else have any comments about this? So, what we said is, the whole idea of submitting this was to get a plan of, a work plan, right? So, do you think two months is enough time to make the actual installation?
Yes.
Okay. So, we'll allow a real two months for that, as opposed to setting that as a hearing date? So, all of April and all of May? So, how about you come back in, you submit on May, or let's say, June 1st? And we have a hearing on, a decision date, because we can close this, a decision date on June 21st?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, great. So, for our motion to close? Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oathley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nachanda?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. You'll submit the drawing, the revised drawing that just shows the extra note, right?
Correct. Yes. Thank you.
Item number four, 120766BZ, 305 Washington Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good morning again. Call Safaro, applicant. Yesterday, I brought a letter to the board indicating retention of a professional engineer to do the design, and who is also someone who will be doing the installation of the sprinkler system. If you don't have it in your file, I have copies of the letter here.
Say again, what's installation? What do you have?
A letter from a professional engineer indicating that it's been retained to do the plans and permits for the...
Okay. No, that I didn't see.
I have it here.
When was he retained?
The letter's dated March 17.
Oh. Okay. Okay, yeah. If you could, did anybody else see that note? I didn't see anything.
I didn't see it. Watch the board.
Okay. So, all right.
Incidentally, the engineer is also the principal of the sprinkler system company, and will also do the installation. He's been retained for that as well.
Okay. Do you know anything about installation schedule?
Right now, he has the obstacle of getting through the Landmarks Preservation Commission. If you recall, this is a landmark building. So, we will need at least a waiver from the Landmarks Commission, or certificate of no effect, since the work done will not affect the exterior appearance of the building.
But meanwhile, he's filing the sprinkler, he's preparing...
I haven't seen anything on file yet, but he's saying in his letter that he's going to submit for the Landmarks Preservation Commission determination first. That will be a condition before the building department could approve.
Right. But you can do it simultaneously. He should be preparing sprinkler drawings now?
Yes. Well, he can, but I'm saying it won't advance until Landmarks issue is resolved.
Right. But you don't wait until Landmarks looks, right? So, make sure he's...
He's accustomed to doing file filing. I've discussed with him, and he told me that once he has Landmarks Preservation Commission disposition, he's not opposed to self-certify the application, which will save some time.
Okay. So, we need time for, how about this, that we, are there any speakers on this? We give you time to get the drawings approved and all that, but I would really like to hear status reports. So, I probably think you need four months in total to get the drawings approved, and two months to install. But we, I want status, because we can't keep postponing. This has been a year.
I would think that the building department approval is probably foreseeable within maybe 60 days.
Really?
Yes. Because we're not asking for Landmarks approval, we're asking for a certificate of no effect.
Okay, well, 60 days, that's two months, right?
And thereafter, the installation, probably another month.
All right. So, three months. So, then, so that's the end of June, that all of this should be done. So, then, why don't you come back on July 19th?
Fine.
With a submission on June 29th.
You need intermittent status reports?
Yeah, if you could give us, for instance, the DOB, let us know that DOB has approved the sprinkler drawings.
Okay.
Then, and you obviously, they obviously need to find a sprinkler contractor. So, I'm not sure that this is enough time, but anyway. Okay?
Okay, fine. I can do that. I'll give you the other status report.
So, there should be a, sorry, oh, okay. Yeah, Fire Department, please.
Yeah, we received the affidavit. In order to have closure with this case, I highly recommend that, in conjunction with the affidavit and the plans for the sprinkler system, that we have to do a test, a performance test, I guess, before closure of this case, so that we could do a hydrostatic test of the sprinkler system.
Right.
Be sure that, you know, everything is functioning. And I want to thank the applicant for the affidavit, so that we can forward this to us, Fire Suppression Unit, follow up on this, the testing.
Okay. So, as soon as we get, we get information that the sprinklers have been installed, we'll let you know, so that you can arrange the tests.
Yeah, we need to, well, actually, Department of Buildings does the first test, but we want a copy for the record. And then, subsequent to that, the Fire Department does the hydrostatic testing every five years on the system, to make sure that it's maintained and in compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, I'm thinking three months isn't enough to complete this, but you should come back in three months, so we can be sure that you're making progress.
Fine. I'll copy the Fire Department and progress reports, so then they'll be aware of it.
Okay. Okay. So, then, any other comments, issues? No? So, I think that's what we do. So, continued hearing to...
July 19th?
July 19th.
Okay.
Submission, June 29th. And a progress report in between. Okay?
Monthly, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay. Item number five? I'm sorry. Do you have another question? No? Did you have more? No?
No. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Sorry. 125580BC, 353331st Street, Queens.
Good morning. Sandy Anagnostu, representing the applicant. I attended the review session yesterday and noted the board's comments regarding the fire corridor. We proposed an easement over Lot 9 from Lot 10. And I understand this is problematic for the board, since Lot 9 was not part of the original variance, and since this corridor would be accessory to the commercial use, that would be a problem. So, we are looking at the possibility of providing a fire corridor for the second means of egress directly onto 31st Street from the front of the establishment. It's a 50-foot-wide frontage, so we haven't laid it out, we haven't looked at it in detail, but it's possible. So, we'll look at that and provide a revised plan to the board. Also, the board wanted clarification of what the current use is of lots 8 and 9. They're currently vacant. They have been for years. There really is no proposed use at this time. It may be sold in the future, but currently, they're vacant. There's nothing there. It's a paved...
But it used to be used in conjunction with the use that was the Use Group 17 use.
Well, it was, at a time, by the previous owner. He may have parked trucks there. Mainly, he used it as a storage yard, and at some point, it became a junkyard, and the community was upset about that. There was, you could see, there were complaints filed, and my office actually had him clean it up. And there are photographs in the record here at the board, which shows that a lot of rubbish accumulated over time. So, I don't know. He did park a truck there, but there was also a lot of junk there. So, it wasn't really, and prior to that, there was actually a house on the lot, which was demolished in 2000. I'm really researching more the Building Department records and the Finance Department, and it seems that although there was a demolition done in 2000 on that home, and there was also a garage on Lot 8. So, it was in common ownership from, over the years, but in 19, let me see, in 1976, Lot 10 was owned by one individual, Gus Schweitzer, and the two lots were owned by Frank Mestrick until 1966, and then another individual, Carl Rogel, owned lots 8 and 9 from 1966 until 1987. Lot 10 was sold to Plagakis Margarita in 1979, and then a variance was filed with the Board of Stand, a variance application was filed with the Board of Standards and Appeals and granted in 1981. But at the time that that variance was granted, the two lots, 8 and 9, were owned by another individual, and not by the applicant. It was not part of that zoning lot. It was owned separately. Those two lots, 8 and 9, were actually sold in 1987 to Plagakis.
Right, okay. So, that was when the board should have been notified that there was an enlargement of the zoning lot, right? If it was to be treated as one, which it was being done, right? Sounds like it was Plagakis who used it as a storage.
Storage yard. Well, this was, it was mainly the use, the use that was approved by the board was manufacturing of steel products, and I don't know if there was really much manufacturing going on. It was more of like a warehouse for restaurant equipment sales. And so, he may have had a park, a truck parked in that area, but it was mainly like a storage yard, which over time became a junkyard. So...
Okay.
It was not always in common ownership. So, I'm going to provide more details to the board and submit these records from the Buildings Department about the history of it. There was a house on Lot 9, which was demolished in 2000. So, I'm not sure if it was, when it became vacant, or who was living there, and for how long, but there was a residence there. Also, the board asked us to clarify the parking requirements and how we calculated the, as Madam Chair noted, the front of house opposed to the back of the house, which, if we calculated the floor area based on the seating area of the eating and drinking establishment, which would require 15 parking spaces, which would fall under the waiver. However, if we include the entire floor area for the building, which would be 5,200 square feet, then we wouldn't qualify for this waiver, and we would have to request a waiver from the board. So, we have referred this issue to the Department of Buildings for their interpretation, to see if they would accept the exclusion of the back of the house floor area. And we will provide the board with that information.
Okay, great.
Once we meet with them. And I understand that if we do move forward and request a parking waiver from the board, that we would have to provide a parking demand study, and we would do that analysis. The board also asked us to address the findings of under section 7324 for a special permit for eating and drinking establishment with entertainment and no dancing, for a C1 overlay. There is no entertainment proposed, there is no alcohol to be served, and there is no dancing. This is just an eating and drinking, not drinking, an eating restaurant.
They're not going to get a liquor license?
No.
They're not going to bring their own bottles?
Well, the operator is here, he can explain. It's a Middle Eastern restaurant, so they don't serve alcohol. There are other drinks, but not alcoholic.
Okay.
So, the operator and tenant is here.
Right.
If you would like him just to speak a little about the operation. He's been in this community for 18 years. He does operate another restaurant several blocks away on 31st Street, and this would be his second location. He's been a part of this community for many years, a business owner, and he would not want to do anything that would be detrimental for this community or the neighborhood.
Okay. So, no, but before that.
Sure.
So, with respect to the findings for those special permits, the 7324 special permits?
Yes.
The reason that I was thinking that that's relevant here is because it asks a lot of questions about the impact on the neighborhood.
I am.
And since it's a large restaurant, you could use those kinds of questions to see how this proposal will affect the neighborhood. That way, you could respond specifically to those questions, even though there's, and you can state there's no entertainment, no dancing, no alcohol, but whatever the answer is to those questions.
I understand. And just briefly, on the neighborhood character, this is zoned R5, but the character is very much commercial and manufacturing uses. If you look at the radius diagram, the land use map, photographs, and we can provide more information on this, the character really is commercial and manufacturing uses. There are some mixed-use buildings with residential units, but it's on a main street, 31st Street, which is a main street on this, major street in this part of Queens, Astoria. A lot of commercial uses there. It's not like a block that's a quiet little residential neighborhood where this restaurant is coming in, and there are already many restaurants. So, we can address that in the findings.
Okay. And before he comes to speak, can we just hear about the financials that were supposed to be provided?
Right. So, we did provide financials, but it only included Lot 10, which was the subject of the original variance.
Right.
At the time, lots 8 and 9 were not owned by the applicant. They were acquired in 1987. The variance was granted in 1981. We did the analysis to show a residential development only for Lot 10. There is one owner now for all three lots. So, being that it wasn't always in common ownership, and the Lot 10 was only the subject of the original variance, would the board still want us to include the other two lots?
Yeah, the other two, it's like hard to imagine. You know, you're a property owner. You own two vacant lots, and you don't know what to do with them in a residential district. Hard to get my head around this. You know, it's an amazing opportunity, potentially, assuming that the numbers work, turn this into a residential development, which is what you, one of the conditions of this variance was to check regularly whether eventually residential would be the right use here and supportable, right?
Right. But however, there's an existing building on Lot 10, which would be much more feasible to convert that building for a commercial use than, and they've also looked at community facility, but there was really no interest. They tried to, an as-of-right community facility, and they had no luck with securing a tenant for that type of use. But it would be much more costly to demolish this existing building, which is not a very old building, and it's in, demolish that and then construct a residential, multiple dwelling, which is fronting the elevated train, and this neighborhood is changing. In fact, there's talk that this area might actually be rezoned to commercial in the future, which parts of Astoria were, but not these blocks.
Okay, so that's what would, all of that would go into your financial analysis? Taking all those lots owned in common, and saying, you know, it costs X to demolish and Y to rebuild, and once it was rebuilt, you know, what's the market for apartments that are...
Rentals or sales.
Yeah, whatever, for, that are adjacent to the elevated. I mean, all of that would go into it, but that's a requirement of the renewal, right? To check that the variance is still relevant.
So, the board would require us to analyze the other two lots, even though they weren't part of the original variance?
Because they weren't in common ownership at the beginning, and actually, the property owner was required to come back to us when they modified the size of the zoning lot and didn't, right? So, now, common ownership, vacant, not used, da-da-da, clear that it's a development site.
Okay. So, we'll provide that. Also, the sprinkler and fire alarm, we've stated that it's not required, but it has been referred to the Fire Department for review. Oh, and the board also mentioned that restrictions could be placed on lots 8 and 9 if they're not added to this zoning lot or variance application.
We're concerned about sort of the illegal bleed of use, right?
I understand.
Okay. Okay. So, then, yeah, if the restaurant owner would like to tell us what his plans are?
Mr. Mohamed Nassim?
Good morning.
Good morning. Please, if you can, if you have the record? Aye. So, can you just tell us what your plan is for the restaurant space?
Actually, we, as Sandy just mentioned, we are in the neighborhood. I grew up in that Astoria since 1990. I live around. And we opened a restaurant that we already have since 1997, and this will be our second location. And we already know the neighborhood. The neighborhood already knowing us. Basically, it will be very family-type of restaurants, authentic Afghan cuisine that will be established in this new location as well.
And so, you'd have, I see there's more than 200 seats, right?
Yeah.
So, is it also that you might be doing parties and things like that?
A party is a smaller party, probably, maybe, but not the live music, not any kind of concerts and stuff, maybe some birthday parties, Sweet 16, something like that, but not huge or not loud music or parties.
And you have a birthday party without music?
Birthday parties.
Little bit of music. Okay. Any other questions? But you don't intend to get a liquor license?
No, we are not...
And you don't have one at the other restaurant?
No, we don't have, no. We have very delicious green tea, Afghan green tea. So, we changing liquors to the, or yogurt drink, other kind of drink, but not a liquor.
Okay. Okay, good. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much for coming. Yeah?
Thank you.
I guess the Fire Department wants to...
Right, right. No, I just meant for the owner. I mean, thanks, Fire Department, yeah.
John, I call the Fire Department. I have some questions here. It was indicative that there was a stop work order from Department of Buildings. Can we be updated as to what the dynamic or what the backdrop is on that, or what the background is? And the other thing is, is going to be a restaurant, the Fire Suppression Unit has to be, a Rainshood Unit has to be placed in, and if it's deemed that's...
You mean like an ANSL system or something else?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. I mean, that's, that's really a code-compliant situation. The other issue, too, is the occupant load for a sprinkler system, if it's going to be installed in the fire alarm system. So, that, all of this would impact on the Fire Suppression Unit for the sprinkler system, and the fire alarm system, of course, would go to our electrical unit, just by way of information to the applicant.
Okay, so...
That they should be copied.
I think there was some statement in the statement of facts that fire alarm and sprinkler is not required. That's what I, why I was interested in your opinion.
Okay.
There's more than 200 patrons?
Yeah, because that's, one of the criteria is the occupant load for the sprinkler system.
Mm-hmm.
That's one of the qualifying criteria to require the installation of a sprinkler system, right? So, I, you know...
But you don't know what, you don't know whether the 200...
What the, what the occupant load is. If it's 200 or more, I believe it's...
It's more than 200 proposed?
Proposed.
But do you know whether they need sprinklers? Do they need sprinklers?
Well, it's, they would need sprinklers if it's 200 or more. Generally, that's, you know, that's what the code requires.
Okay. So, so we're thinking we need sprinklers? And a fire alarm?
And a fire alarm. And that, of course, that would be forwarded to the electrical unit, which, of course, is a fire alarm unit, and the suppression unit would deal with the, with the... With the sprinkler system. And then, there's another unit that was established for the Rainshood. It's called DO29 now. We had restructured in the Fire Department. Just by way of information of everybody here that's putting in these quote-unquote, these ANSL systems, we have a, the DO29 used to be part of the Fire Suppression Unit. It's now a separate unit, because we did some internal restructuring within the Fire Department.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions?
And then, also, the stop work order, we'd like to know.
Right. We'll have dissent.
Thank you.
I asked to speak to that. Are there any speakers on this? Okay.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Chief Russell Strobel, Fire Department. We just want to get a clarification of the exact occupant load, the aggregate occupant load. As per DOB, it's 300 or more occupants. It would require a sprinkler.
Oh, okay.
So, we want to know the definitive occupant load, and also, just the disposition of the stop work order as per DOB records.
Okay. I don't think we're getting up to, would you say 300 what?
It's 300 or more.
300 or more?
Totally.
I don't think we get up to that. But I suppose that has to do with, in a party, there would be more than there are seated. So, that's, that's the question, right? Standing for a party versus seated?
Right, if it's a restaurant, I would, I would assume that they would need a public assembly permit and whatever is allowable per square footage. So that's the number that we're interested in.
Rated occupancy, okay, Mrs. Naxton.
Regarding the occupant load, we do have a table on drawing P1, which shows 247. So that is below...
That's seated, seated plus staff.
Correct. For the first floor mezzanine and kitchen serving area, seated and staff.
Is 247.
247.
So, so you need to do the rated, rated occupancy, right?
For public assembly, which we are doing a public assembly plan, which we will file with Buildings.
Right.
So we can provide that.
But, but the point is, if you, if there's stand-up party, I don't, you know, every restaurant handles it differently, so they move the tables and everybody gathers together. That's more than 247, right? So you're close, so the question is...
But would 53 people be standing, I don't, to bring it up to 300?
They only need like 15 square feet a person, standing. So anyways, that's something that you should calculate and let us know what the rated occupancy is, okay?
Okay. They are also going to be filing for the fire suppression system, the ANSL system. There's a separate application for that, that's filed with Buildings. And regarding the stop work order, that was for work that was done under an alteration type 2, interior work, interior partition work. And the permit, I think there was a permit obtained a while ago, but it had expired and they were doing work without a permit. So there's no work going on, there hasn't been for, for years. When the, if and when we do obtain the approval from the Board of Standards and Appeals, we will correct that violation, obtain a valid permit, obtain approval from the Buildings Department, obtain a valid permit, do the work and have all the required inspections and have that violation corrected.
Okay.
And have that.
Good, thanks. Any other speakers? Any other questions? Okay. Hold on a second, okay. So you kind of have a lot of work to do, right? You need, we need to modify the fire corridor, do the financial analysis that includes Lot 8 and 9, get that information from Department of Buildings about whether you can just count back of, you can exclude back of house from the parking. What else, what else? I think that's it.
What?
Financial, you mentioned financial.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so maybe a month to do that?
Yes, I would say at least.
Maybe six weeks?
Yes.
Six weeks, okay. So that puts us in May. So how about come back on June 2nd, is that, okay, so with a May 18 submission?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
June 2nd's a Thursday, though, yeah?
Yeah, that, June 2nd's a Thursday. It's an unusual hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 6, 9806 BZ, 1045 Beach 9th Street, Queens.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board, Eric Palatnik. Thank you very much for reviewing the material, specifically the quite large study that was done regarding the character of the area. With us here today, we have a few people with us. We have Rabbi David Sintnick, who spoke at your last hearing. We also have with us Mark Mariscal, who's the project architect. And also joining us is Eugene Schwartzman, who's the chief of staff to Assemblyman Philip Goldfetter, who's very supportive of this application and wishes to speak to your board. He's been working throughout the last year or so with the community board and with the Ashiva on this application, so he very much wanted to come today. He approached our office.
How about an engineer?
An engineer.
Mechanical engineer.
We believe you're going to be happy with the information. Why don't you jump right to that? Mr. Mariscal is here.
No, I didn't want to jump right to that. I specifically asked for the mechanical engineer to talk about mechanicals.
Yeah, Mr. Mariscal's made some revisions. He's spoken to the mechanical engineer and he has some changes to the designs of the mechanicals that we believe are going to address the board's concerns. The mechanical engineer could not be here, but Mr. Mariscal is very, very, very involved with the project and was at your last hearing, obviously knows exactly what you were looking for, and he's come up with a solution, I think, that you might be happy with. Well, since that was the first question, actually, from the review session, it might be a good segue to it. You were discussing the rooftop mechanicals and why they can't be pushed around on the roof and moved around. Mr. Mariscal, would you like to speak to that? And I also brought the plan. Would you like to pass up the plan?
Mark Mariscal. So I'm sorry, the engineer, it was short notice and he wasn't able to be here today.
See, that's kind of why I wanted the engineer. So the, the plans is revised, which now show the mechanicals, like taking up the entire roof. It's kind of like you're...
Well, now, just, just a moment, is that this was done very quickly. It needs further study. To get where we had been before, took, you know, a couple of months of coordination to figure out. I think we can do better. I mean, the, the play roof space has declined by about 500 square feet. But again, I think we can improve to be closer to where we were before. I think the, our goal was to keep the, the shaft within the building in basically the same space, the same location in terms of the distribution on the floors. But, you know, we found that, and again, this was part of our, kind of having lived with it for so long, the thought of moving the units, we were thinking that the shaft had to move also, but in fact, it doesn't. I mean, they can offset on, on the roof and, and go down in more or less the same spot. So that the idea of trying to get them away from the street walls while maintaining the shaft location within the building is something that I, I think that we can achieve. And as I said, I think we can improve on the amount of, or reduce the amount of space that the mechanical is taking. But it does open up that whole corner for the play area, which I think would be nice. There's less space, which is bounded by the units themselves, you know, which, a good portion of the space before was actually between the two rows of units. So now it's much more open, I think.
So question, what is the minimum work distance that's needed between the machine? Yeah, I mean, sort of in the old days, it used to be like four or five feet in between, from the machine to the wall, sort of, so that the worker could work. You have huge areas of space there. And I, part of the issue is to get the, in this version, to get the fence as far away from the perimeter as possible, like, yeah, why does it need to, there's such roomy rooms here for this mechanical equipment?
Well, again, we're not looking to throw away space that's very valuable for the use of the students on the roof.
Right.
And again, this was done quickly and we would want to keep it to the absolute minimum for the units to function, for sure.
Okay. Okay, so you'll work on it to pull it away, to reduce the amount of paged-in area?
And maximize the amount of play roof space, so.
Okay, that's good. Okay, so then I think, as long as we have you, the other subject was about a parapet? I don't, I don't, I doubt you had time to, or somebody had time to go to the location with a laser to measure the height to the top of the parapet of the nearby buildings?
Oh, yes, that wasn't, yeah, it wasn't me.
Okay. Did somebody actually do that already?
I think, Eric.
Okay.
Jessica from Eric's office spoke to the surveyor.
Hi, Eric Palatnik. After your review sessions yesterday, Ms. Jessica Rubenstein of my office spoke to the surveyor, and he confirmed that the measurements were taken to the top of the parapet by laser. We can get something in writing to your board that depicts that.
You mean new measurements were taken?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, no, the measurements that were taken, I apologize, the measurements that were taken on September 8, 2012.
So of the surrounding buildings?
Of the surrounding buildings. We can pass up...
Oh, that's, I thought that was GIS data.
I can speak about that.
Why don't you speak?
Okay.
I'm going to pass this up.
Well, you can show that, don't you?
Good morning, Ian Rasmussen. As you know, we prepared a building heights study. If you recall, we submitted, I believe in January of 2015, a study indicating just the heights of buildings in approximately 400 feet from the site. The source of the data that was used in that study was provided to us by the applicant from a surveyor, I presume with laser shot would be the way it would be done. As far as surveying the heights of every building within 1,000 feet or more, which is included in our latter report, we use the city's Department of Finance LiDAR scan My personal opinion is that the surveyor's data, which I believe does include the parapet wall, is essentially more accurate. It's the better data, given the option to pick between the two. I can't have a surveyor go out and measure the height of every tall building within whatever it is, a half a mile. So for the sites where surveyor's heights were provided to us by the applicants, sorry, by the applicant, that, those are the heights that we used.
Okay.
Such that it would be consistent through all of our submissions.
So, and you have confirmed with Tri-Borough that they measured using laser?
I spoke yesterday with Mr. Palatnik's office. I believe they spoke to Tri-Borough, and what was said was that it is shot from the ground and what you would pick up is either a parapet wall or the ta, the peaked ridge line of a pitched roof.
Okay.
As it pertains to our study, which evaluated comparatively the heights of buildings standing beside one another, I would suggest that the heights of the lower buildings, which are the, the homes that normally stand alongside the apartment buildings, it's because they don't have parapet walls, the GIS data is likely to be accurate in that the top of the pitched roof is the same thing that would be picked up either by a surveyor or by the GIS data. And the relationship, as it pertains to the spatial relationship between the two...
Say that one, say that once more? What? Say, say that again?
You might expect a difference in the height measured between a GIS scan and a surveyor's reading, because the surveyor's reading picks up the parapet wall and the GIS or LiDAR scan identifies the majority height, which is generally the roof of the building exclusive of rooftop mechanical equipment. In the case of homes that don't have parapet walls, the LiDAR scan and the surveyor's data should be relatively close. And as it pertains to the appearance or the sort of, the spatial impact of one building next to another, we, we used the surveyor's heights in our analysis where applicable, because we believe that's the more accurate of the two data.
Okay, so on this list, do you happen to know, because it's always hard when we try to match it back to maps, do you happen to know which of these are the ones that, there's one on dinsmorr?
The, the eight that were done by the surveyor, by sort of the, the practicalities of him walking around, those were done earlier. If you'll recall, our original comparison of building heights only looked at 400 feet from the site. So I believe the ones where we have the surveyor's height are, are just the handful of taller buildings.
Like number three and number two?
This, this map.
Yeah, I'm looking at that one. So number three and number two on that map?
Yeah, and, no, for all of these sites.
Oh, all of those sites?
The heights that we use in our...
Because those are 800 feet, okay.
Yeah, so I guess the, originally, when they sent the person out, they must have just said, you know, get us the heights of tall stuff.
So according to that, it'd be great to verify. It's a little hard to believe that, though. These are five-story buildings. How could they only be 50 feet high to the top of a parapet?
Whether or not something is counted by a story in the Pluto data and whether or not it's considered a basement or a cellar under zoning, there is a good amount of variation. There's certainly times where a five-story building is 60-some-odd feet, and that would appear to be because the basement is not counted. Other times it could be the other way.
No, no, I'm just counting windows. Four windows plus a basement that's really above grade.
Which example are you talking?
I'm looking at nine to 10 dinsmorr. I'm looking at an image of it that you provided in your last report.
Yep, this one?
Number three, yeah. So it's four windows, but you can see the first floor is really elevated, right? Almost a full story. And the parapet is super high. And that's only 50 feet?
I mean, I'll just, to quickly rattle it off, assuming that the, the first floor of the building stands at maybe three, four feet above grade because of that basement, at 10 to 11 feet, floor-to-floor for four stories, and then a parapet wall of another three or four feet, that would seem to be approaching 50, 52 feet.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
I, I only say that so quickly because before last year, when the Department of Finance made all of their roof height data available to our studies, we used to estimate the building heights one by one in all of these studies, so.
Because you didn't, yeah, because it was so unreliable.
Because we didn't have, we didn't have any data, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I added a few of these up.
Which, this one is what I'm looking at, see? I don't know, 40 here, I think that's more than 40. I think that's like seven. But anyway, all right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
For him now, for the architect?
Yeah, for the, for Mr. Mariscal?
Yes, I was, I would like you to go through what constitutes each floor. In looking at the floor-to-floor heights, it's 12 and a quarter feet.
You mean the proposed or the existing slabs?
The proposed, okay. Then, in looking at your chart, your, and your memo, from the top of the slab to the underside of a beam, you have nine feet 10 inches. That's a 29-inch difference right there. Then from the top of the slab to the ceiling is eight feet 7 inches, which is, just, if you can explain to me exactly where these deductions are occurring, if you can do it on the board. What size beam are you using for your memo?
No.
What is the size, I, I know the duct is eight inches, which, two inches of insulation. You have a three-inch ceiling, but everything's not adding up for me.
So are you talking...
If you could just give us the detail.
But I just, the, the memo that I sent on March 2nd is referring to the approved floor-to-floor, which is 11 foot 4.
Okay.
So your memo matches up with P14, that little detail that you did?
Yes, yes, far should, yep. I was just explaining the, sort of, the as-approved, and then I think in the memo that I wrote in July of last year, it listed the, the proposed or the, you know, the asked-for. So there's two, I mean, we could do both on the board.
Well, what you're, what you're proposing, that's what I'd like to see, what constitutes all this deduction to the ceiling height?
Okay.
From the floor-to-floor slab?
I just, my original memo is in my briefcase. I just will get it.
Okay.
While you're searching, maybe we, we could talk about some other things. Not sure what, though.
Well, did you come, did you have the cost estimates for the two different designs?
He's securing the cost estimates right now. Mark has been working on that. He's waiting on, I think, a final piece of information to provide it to the board.
Okay. Oh, with respect to the sign that I saw on Google?
It's been corrected. The rabbi did not know of the mistake. Thank you for pointing it out.
Okay.
He's had it corrected. He just emailed me a picture of it, actually.
Great, love to see the picture.
That shows it corrected. We'll submit that to the board.
Shows it not residential.
Yes, rabbi's got, got his hands full. He's having a tough time keeping up with all the little details, so we apologize for that. Mark? So, you know, while I'm drawing this, maybe you can continue with some other items.
Oh, oh, you're not going to talk us through as you, like, like a professor?
I was thinking the same, I was thinking the same thing as you.
Okay. Let's see, what else did we want to know about? Google screen.
Was the elevator, was a question about the elevator again, Mark is going to be.
Yeah, fortunately, the architect is otherwise engaged.
A lot of it is relating, a lot of the questions is relating to Mark.
Well, you know what I could do, if, maybe there, there are people, speakers in the audience who might want to speak.
Is that official?
Yeah, actually, right. Sorry to keep you waiting.
Thank you so much for this opportunity.
State your name, please?
Eugene Schwartzman, Assemblyman Goldfetter's office. It's an honor and pleasure to be here on the Assemblyman's behalf, he has that I attend. This is a no-brainer in our community. The community board approves it, the four-foot difference is really negligible, and the surrounding characteristics of the neighborhood match this type of building. There's, there's many other yeshivas in the area, many other high-rise buildings in the area, and we would appreciate every consideration possible, and we hope for a favorable decision.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other speakers on this? Okay. Draw fast.
We're back to the architect.
Mark feels the pressure.
How's your singing repertoire? What? Waiting on the estimate.
So you're going from the 12 feet 2 inches?
The problem is that, back to the memo that I had from last summer, we don't have, which has the proposed heights.
Oh.
So, I have the, yeah, if you had that, that would be great, but I just.
Do you know that was a July memo?
I think it was July of 2014.
July, huh? That would have been with the original application permission.
Which I listed, I know the beams increased by four, the ceiling increased by five.
Because I noticed that you're using some 24-inch deep beams in the new design.
As girders, right, which we would work around, which, which allows us to space.
Which would be actually going through classrooms.
Well, no, most of the columns are sort of the wall between the classroom and the wall, and obviously, we wouldn't have any ducts go under those beams, though.
Okay.
That we would work at some.
So they would be going through corridors and offices, perhaps?
And we would work to avoid any trunk duct crossings of those.
I have one dated December 2014, is there a later one?
That's the, I have December 1st, 2014.
Yeah, is, oh, that's what you have, you, there's a subsequent one to that?
No, I think there was, there was one before that, I'm, I'm apologized.
Not that we have.
I have that.
That's not in our, we don't have anything earlier than to, than December 2014.
I remember in the, in the proposed, we had an eight-foot, seven ceiling height, and we had 11 foot 4, floor-to-floor. And the.
That's in the original design?
So.
But now it's 12, 12 feet 3 inches?
So let me just work back to that, then. So we had. Nine foot 10 for the underside of the beam, which included, you know, an inch of fireproofing. And we had an eight-inch duct plus four, so that was one foot. And three inches of ceiling construction. I think the idea was that we were not going to.
And what's the floor slab? Five inches, four inches?
I think it's, it's either, I think it's five.
So you have a one-foot duct running underneath the beam?
Right, which we would place the lights, so that we didn't have beam duct lights, but it would be impossible not to have beam and duct.
Why can't you run the duct in between the beams and only drop down when you have to cross over?
Well, so, any, like the trunk ducts, we would run in, we would, as we say, or as I say, we'd build out a soffit, you know, next to one of the walls, but the branch duct serving the room to say that it's also going to be in a soffit. The rooms aren't that big that I feel that it would be very disruptive visually to have sort of all this bumping, so what we would do is have a flat ceiling, have the, you know, the ducts are going to cross at least a couple of pillar beams, but we would avoid putting any lights there. So the worst case would be duct and ceiling. So if we're saying that, so that's nine foot 10, eight foot 10. Yeah, eight foot 10 minus 3 is eight foot 7. So our goal was to be able to get to a nine-foot ceiling, and our, our beam would go to one foot 4 plus an inch for fireproofing with the same setup. And so basically, we would have nine feet plus one foot 3 plus one foot 5 would be eight. So it's 11, eight plus five would be 12 foot 1, floor-to-floor.
But your floor-to-floor is 12.25 on your plans. So, I'm just.
Maybe it's a six-inch slab?
Yeah, I mean, you're only talking in.
Well, I mean, he should know.
No, well, he doesn't have the drawings. How do you do?
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, that is 12 foot 3, and I think one of the things was, in order to have the beams further apart, is that we, we end, oops, sorry, we ended up with a six-inch slab, so that's 12 foot 2. And. So I don't, I don't know where the 12 foot 3 came from.
Okay, but that's not adding significant height, the one inch over the three floors? So if that's all we were talking about, we wouldn't be talking.
One of the things was, we were trying to get, we were trying to get more height on the first floor because of the base.
Right, I was just looking at the typical floor.
Yeah, yeah.
And.
Okay.
So you're basing this all on the 16-inch beam, because a lot of the beams are not 16 inches, a lot of the beams you're using are 12 inches.
Right.
Right, well, we wrote this, this was a long time. Right. The assumption was that typically, the filler beam would be a 16, but some of the spans still are small, so that they're able to use some 12 also.
Right.
Okay. Are you, that answer your question?
It does, I mean, I guess the question is, is there any way in, of, you know, reducing some of these dimensions in terms of, you know, the size of the duct? Does it have to be an inch? I mean, a foot?
Well, I mean, it's.
It's pretty standard.
And it can't.
And it's pretty small, pretty much.
Ceiling construction.
Yeah. And 10 inches too small, then it makes noise.
Yeah, it'll start to whistle after a while.
Um, so if we could go to the, to the mass again, where the issue is about the fencing that actually makes the building apparently taller, and, and for you to look at it using a parapet as the language, because that's what's consistent in this neighborhood? So in other words, Dinsmore, for example, just right across the street, has a, has an articulated parapet. So if you were to provide a parapet instead, so that we're not, you're not apparently adding enormous height with a fence, that most of it is concealed by a decorative parapet, that might be more compatible with the neighborhood?
Well, I, I think that, well, if I understand, you're asking if, rather than using a fence?
No, I understand the fence doesn't go high enough.
Right.
But the fence would be set back behind the parapet, and then the parapet is concealing a significant amount of fence, because it's at least four foot 6 high.
But at least the, the fence is open, you know, it's, it's, as the photos I sent last time show from another project, it's, it's primarily, you know, wire mesh. So the parapet is solid, so I think more fence and less parapet would, would be more towards your end.
But the parapet seems to be the way that the area buildings conceal their junk, you know, their mechanics.
But they're not play roofs either, which, I mean, typically, we do for kids 15 feet.
It's a 15-foot-high fence? Yikes.
And that's, the photographs that I had sent last time were of a 15-foot-high fence, of which approximately four feet is covered by the parapet.
Four feet's covered by, and you don't have a parapet, though, in your case?
We do.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
You have a four-foot parapet? Oh. I thought it, I didn't read it that way in the elevations, it looked just like the fence was sitting right on top of a very short, you know, one-foot parapet.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay.
I mean, I just think for a sense of enclosure and just for privacy and.
So in terms of those drawings, can you make clear, because the par, the fencing that you were showing for mechanical enclosure, or, you're not showing any fencing for the mechanical enclosures on the elevations. When you pull the fencing back, obviously, the line weight changes on those elevations, right? But when it was all the way to the front, you don't show it at all, so it gives the impression that there's no fence when there's a fence.
Right.
Right?
Right.
You also have the rendering, so the rendering, that it's sitting on the photograph that's on the wall, that's on the construction site?
Right. Well, the rendering was done years ago.
Right. So, but it's not, it's not.
It wasn't updated.
It's describing the project accurately. Okay.
Getting back to the new design of the steel frame.
Yes.
I know the whole premise of, for increasing the height of the building was based on the fact that you had to use these 16-inch beams in most of the floor slabs, correct?
Mm-hmm.
But in your new design, as far as the classrooms are concerned, I don't really see that. I see mostly 12-inch beams and some 14-inch beams. And the one area where you do have 16-inch beams is actually in the corridor near the toilets, so it wouldn't be really in the classroom. So the apparent, you know, that the heights of the classroom ceilings would actually be, you know, significantly, you know, at least four inches higher. Could you comment on that?
Well, when we wrote this memo a year ago, that we were comparing it to other projects that we've done where the typical filler beam was like a W-16, subsequently, just within the last few weeks, the structural engineer did an actual design based on this particular building, which you saw and I saw for the first time last week, I think. So obviously, he's not looking to use deeper beams if he doesn't have to, and I guess based on the spans, I mean, we didn't tell him, please use all W-16s, because that's what I said at the hearing. But, you know, so he did it, and there's some of the spans that are smaller, so, I mean, I suppose, again, looking at how it's laid out, if, if it was, we could reduce by a couple inches on the floor, perhaps, depending on exactly how that gets laid out, with our goal of maintaining, you know, a nine-foot ceiling in the classrooms. But yes, now that we have an actual design, potentially.
So you could take another look at it?
You know, I mean, we're talking a couple inches, I think.
Right.
Right, I mean, it's not.
Right.
Multiple feet. Yeah.
Okay, so. Okay, and then I think there was a.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify the height of the elevator. So in your previous scheme, you had everything stacked on top, you had the overrun plus the machine room.
Right.
So now you're, you just have the overrun, I just wanted to make sure that you couldn't squish down a little bit further on that one.
So the advantage is by changing the elevator type to the machine room, lest that the, the controller sits next to the elevator at the last stop, rather than being traditionally on top of the overrun.
So your cab height is what? You've got a.
It's like a regular eight foot.
Eight-foot cab, and then you've got, you've got six feet for.
So the overrun is, is, you need clear, I believe, based on another project that we're doing, 13 feet 1.
13 feet.
From the last stop to the underside of the structure. So I think we're saying it's 14, 6, you know, with the framing and the decking and the insulation and.
So as long as your interior is 13, 1, you've got an interior dimension of 13, 1 to the underside of.
Of any, any obstruction.
Any obstruction.
Yeah.
Okay, and you've got that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, because we had asked them, because before there was a very huge.
Oh, I know.
Everything was stacked.
No, I mean, we had based, again, it was, this is much better.
Okay.
And a lot more companies make this type of thing, so it's better for pricing, too, and availability.
The advantage of waiting so long on a project.
Well, as I said, I mean, the technology is, technology keeps moving forward, so.
Right, okay. And I had just a question about the framing diagram, you had a deep, that you submitted this last time, detail 1 and 2 on S-102. I didn't understand it at all, it's like there's a wall in front of the window?
So if you look at the elevation, some of the windows are like divided into two horizontally, and some are divided into three, like the corner window and some of the other ones. So what we wanted to do to, to give the building more open and a sort of a lighter look is to have more glass, to make it look like it's a bigger opening. So the, the bottom horizontal row of those three stacked windows is actually spandrel glass, so the sill is at the top of that, because we couldn't go with such a low sill height, so it was really just for visual effect.
I see. Okay. Got it. Thank you. Can you include in any modifications to the drawings a building section? Because we don't have one.
Okay, yeah, I, the P-14, I mean, that was the way I interpreted the request for a detailed.
Yeah, that's a, that's a detailed section. I need a section of the longitudinal or.
I mean, I, yes, yes.
Lateral section, okay. That helps us understand the kinds of questions that were brought up today, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I think, is there any other comments, questions?
So, on this pricing of the steel?
Yeah.
The builder, Jacob Merblestein, had, was trying to get the pricing, and he called, he was hoping to have it this morning, and he does not, the steel people have not come through yet. I mean, he said in his discussions with them that he feels that the savings will be in the order of $250,000, but he doesn't have those hard numbers yet, and as soon as he does, I mean, he wrote a letter to that effect, but as soon as he has the pricing, obviously, we would want to get that to you.
Great. Okay, are there, we already did the speakers, okay, so we need the pricing, we need you to look at the mechanicals on the roof. What else?
You had six items, Eric Palatnik, if I may recap to assist. We are going to be getting you cost estimates, or five items, excuse me, that Mark just spoke about. We're going to clarify the 15-foot fence at the rooftop and clarify that in relation to the parapet. We're going to look at the impact of the beams that Commissioner Montanez raised in the distinction, the differences between the 14 and the 16-foot beams, which Mark thinks might be a few inches. And we are going to provide you with a building section, both longitudinal, longitudinal and lateral. And I do remember the sixth thing, sixth item, was that we are going to give you a refined HVAC plan to show the location, which is what you spoke about at the beginning with Mr. Mariscot.
Okay, perfect. So what are we talking about?
Well, Mark, really, again, it did, all the work goes to Mark, how many weeks do you think you need to address these items? One week?
Seriously?
Prorem's not going to get in the way? One week? Two weeks, I think, because the holidays are coming, and it's going to be a little. Two weeks, I think, because the holidays are coming and it's going to be a little...
Okay, you do fast work. Okay, so two weeks. That would be a submission, say, on the thirteenth of April, or the next hearing on May 3rd.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming on that.
I think the rabbi was just...
Oh, the rabbi was, oh, sorry. Okay, please, please.
Rabbi Sittnick, I'm the principal of the school. First time I said on the sign, I had no idea that, on the sign, I had no, I never even looked at the sign, what was written. I noticed that...
Oh.
It says, tell the neighborhood the truth. I wasn't trying to hide anything from the neighborhood. They probably cut and pasted the sign and put it together. And I just take into consideration, we've done so many things with the architect, the mechanical engineer charged seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars to redo the thing in order to show you clearly the difference. And all the studies, if we didn't feel it was important for the school, I wouldn't spend the money and I wouldn't go through it. And to save $250,000 by me is no small thing. I have to knock on doors to collect that money. So if you please, and it's only, it's only this high.
It's the size of an eight-year-old.
So appreciate your kind consideration. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
New cases, item number seven.
Oh, the fire department wanted to speak.
Oh, wait, fire department, let me say something?
So when I call for speakers, you should come because we're closing, we end up moving on to the next, okay?
Chief Russell Stroll, I just want to clarify, because I didn't see the drawings for the, for the building, that there's FD access through the fence that's on the roof on the, from the, from the streets.
Say again? Access what?
With the, with the fence, a rooftop fence on the sides of the roof facing the street. There has to be rooftop access for the fire department.
Needs access. So in other words, you're talking about the fence that goes around for the play area?
That's correct. So couldn't you say, for example, be on top of a parapet, there has to be a landing on the roof. They have, I don't have the code in front of me, but there's, as per code, there needs to be rooftop access for the fire department. I believe it's a minimum of thirty-six inches, I believe.
Any design that would go to the building department, the building department would have to look at that.
Right.
But I'm just curious about that. Some, we often see fences that go right up against the parapet wall. So that's not the way it's supposed to do it? They're supposed to be pulling back three feet?
To provide a landing.
Yeah. To provide the landing, so the ladder...
That's correct.
With a push access.
That's correct.
Okay, so, but that's, we rarely see anyone pull the fence back.
Well, we had one just recently where they modified the roof plan. I think it was the 51st Street, right?
Yeah, they pulled it back really far. But that, I thought that was aesthetic purposes.
And they usually catch it at the building department.
Oh, I see.
Is this just for each street frontage?
It's for, again, I don't have the code in front of me, but if it's per linear feet, but at the very least, I know that it has to be per, for street access, yes.
Okay, so they should have two landings?
So, for the buildings that are, when they put the ladder up, the firefighter can climb off the ladder, onto the landing, and access the roof.
And then how do they access the roof because there's a fence in their way?
Well, that, they needed, they needed a gate there.
They need a gate. So there needs to be with an operable gate?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Do you need any ways to access flashing around further into the area?
Mark, right, right, okay. Okay, I'm going to make a note. So the flashing, right, you need to be able to maintain the parapet. Okay. But, thank you. It's interesting because often we see drawings where the fence is smack up against the parapet. No one ever says anything. That's very helpful, thank you. So what gets, what we see?
Yes.
Important. Okay. Okay.
Eric Palatnick.
We're done?
Thank you.
Yeah, we're done.
Okay.
Sorry about that. So fire department, please speak up when I say speakers, then who do?
New cases, item number seven, 20197 B.C., 11902, Rockaway Boulevard, Queens.
Hello, good morning again. Eric Palatnick. We're here to make the request to remove the term from a variance that was granted by the board, earlier granted, to allow a Walgreens drugstore of approximately 9,975 square feet. It contains twenty-five parking, twenty-one parking spaces, excuse me, twenty-one. And the property, when the variance was granted, was in a split zoning district with the majority of the property being within an R-32 district and the remainder being in a C-2. Subsequent to your board's approval, the property has been rezoned and is now fully within a C-2 district. When the application was approved, the primary objection was really the change in use granted, the board granted at that time. The operator of the premises, or the owner of the premises, I should say, is works in conjunction with Walgreens, who's the operator on the premises. And the timeframe, the renewal of term has become an imposition that's occurred when it comes time to both refinance and sell the property, both of which are activities that are occurring right now. And we felt as if it would be of great benefit to the applicant if the applicant were given the chance to eliminate the term from the variance, which would allow them a freer ability to refinance and to buy and sell the property, to transfer the property. We believe the request is reasonable because the use is now permitted in the district. But we are not asking to come out from under the board's jurisdiction. We did appear before Community Board 12, where we received, excuse me, it wasn't Community Board 12, this is in the Rockaways, but we received very strong support from the community board for this. And we attended your review session yesterday, and we heard the board's comments. Particularly, we heard the board's comments with respect to the fencing on the property, the stockade fence. We heard the board's comments.
Just before you do that, just to make clear, it's not that you want to, you know, I know you appreciate the board very much, but it's not like you're, you want to stay there because of, of the love of the board. It's because there were waivers that were granted at the time that are not use, right? There were bulk waivers that were granted at the time. That's why you need to stay in the board's...
Yes, well, the bulk waivers that were granted really weren't specifically called out necessarily in the board's approvals originally, other than that the parking facility was not up to par with the C-22 zoning.
But I mean, it's not, it wouldn't be compliant today, in other words.
Correct. But they didn't actually cite a specific, any specific sections of the zoning resolution when they acted upon it, other than section, I'm just scamming, scanning the approval right now. It's 36-00 was the bulk, which is the parking. That was the one that was addressed.
Right, but the thing was, it wasn't, the building couldn't have complied, doesn't comply under current zoning, right? It needed, it needs to maintain the waivers.
No, it needs to maintain the waiver of the boards.
Because it has no side, it has an inadequate side yard, for example, right?
Correct. It's, right now, it's non-compliance, as the board was just mentioning, are four items. It would have, under section 33-25, if constructed today, this is all called out on pages, the bottom page three and the top of page four of our statement. But it's the minimum side yard pursuant to 33-291, street trees that would be required, the parking, 36-21, and a loading berth would be required. So those four items, if the building were constructed today, it would not be compliant with. We've heard the board's comments with respect to conditions on the property that can be improved, and we were aware of that and did call that out in our discussions with the board and the notice of comments. The landscaping needs to have replenishment in certain areas where it's dyed or it's not, has not been planted. The stockade fencing that runs down the left side of the property is certainly in need of, dire need of repair. The building or the enclosure for the garbage, which is a concrete block, certainly could use a paint job and so that it looks much more desired, much nicer. We'll give you a picture of the no-left turn signs, and we heard the board's comments about the parking lot yesterday. And we'd be pleased if it satisfies the board to re-stripe the parking lot and to seal the cracks. We would, we would ask, we've inspected the property, the architect has been out there in the last day after your review session, and the parking lot itself, the surface of it is in good shape, minus a couple of cracks that could be, stand to be filled. So we'd ask for the potential, if we can, to re-stripe the property, the parking lot.
I found the surface of the parking lot to be very oil stained, pitted in some areas. The bumpers were out of place, barely could see the striping. I think it really needs, I don't think it's that expensive also to just resurface.
We're going to get some quotes. When we, when we were discussing it with the owner, he was of the belief it'd be somewhere in the neighborhood of $25,000 to resurface the parking lot. So it is, it is a substantial cost. We would like to try our best, maybe to come back to you even before the next hearing, to show you our efforts to clean it up, including the re-striping, the fixing of any curb, of any bumpers, and the ceiling, to show you maybe in improved condition to save on that cost, because it is a substantial cost. And I'd likely submit, and cars will stain the oil, stain it as soon as they come back again. So the oil stains are, you know, in Harrington parking lots. But nonetheless, we would like to do everything that the board has asked, minus that issue. And if the board should be satisfied with that, we'd like the ability to, we don't think it's going to take a short time to work with the Parks Department on the trees, but we would like to have the approval conditioned upon working with the Parks Department to replenish the trees.
Okay. So we, there were some other questions, too. The trash enclosure, looks like it was enlarged from what was shown on the plan.
Yeah, Frank is going to go and measure. He, when we gave him the message yesterday, he didn't get that when he went to go look at the parking lot. He's here today, Frank Trulia, he's the project architect, but he's going to go back out and measure.
Okay, and also, we wanted a plan that shows the maneuvering of the trucks on the site for loading and unloading. I mean, it says that there's no loading dock, but there really is. There's a four...
Well, there's that corner. It's not really a loading dock, because the cars end up, you know, it's approved that way. The cars are catty-corner to each other at that location. Actually, one of the pictures that we submitted to you, actually, I noticed your comment, and shows a Seven Up truck, I think, in the parking lot that's offloading. That tends to be the majority of the deliveries where the truck will find a location within the parking lot, the box trucks and things like that. The Walgreens deliveries that come directly from Walgreens are scheduled to come in the off-hours, so those don't really come in the parking lot as a full force. But the, the box truck deliveries, the milk, the soda, the bread, which are all delivered by independents, those tend to pull into the parking lot and find any available spot. That's where they offload from, as depicted in the picture.
And they just use a hand truck?
They use a hand truck and carry it in, and they're usually in and out in less than fifteen, twenty minutes. They're not, they're not there very long.
Could you add something to that, you know, discuss it, and if you can do a maneuverability?
Yes, we'll, we will. We'll provide. Frank is here and he's listening, and we'll provide that.
And then, the other thing is, we never had any proof of the sampling protocol and remediation being conducted?
We were all going, the owner was going through their records and as is the architect, neither do they, unfortunately, so we'll try and find that. If need be, we'll get attention Department of Environmental Protection. Where everybody's memories, going back twenty years, so everybody's memories are a little faded. The common response was, we must have done it, they gave us a C of O. So, and it's, it's the same, both projects went through at the same time. They were both developed at the same time, this and the next one. And they both had the sampling protocol condition on it.
Yeah.
So we'll follow up with you, with D.P., and then we'll report back to you.
Okay. And then the next was, where in the world, ooh, whoa, where in the world is the elevator that received all the violations?
It's a good question. It's a conveyor. That's a...
Oh, it's a conveyor?
It's a conveyor. That's Frank Trulia, nodding to me, he's a project architect.
So it has a elevator violations for a conveyor?
For the conveyor. So, and we are working on getting those resolved right now.
And what was the appeal for?
The appeal was for the bed of a map street, for the, the street that's...
Lefferts.
Lefferts, which runs down the alternative side of the property. And I don't believe this impacts that approval.
No.
We should have referenced it, though, in our statement.
I did sort on the C of O.
Yeah, we apologize.
Okay, so then, and if you could just correct that one little mistake on your statement of facts that shows the zoning improperly changed, it just didn't, it's just a typo.
We'll fix that.
Okay. All right. Are there any speakers on this? Including the fire department?
I just have a, sorry. I have a clarification. I know you indicated that you don't meet one of the requirements, which is a street tree planted. How many is required, required, and how many are you proposing to provide?
I don't know off the top of my head. Frank was trying to do the calculations last night, but there's a little bit of confusion only because there's exemptions at the Parks Department for being certain location within the curb cuts and within street tree, within street furniture and within bus stops. So he's doing the calculation, he's going to do it, we were just talking about it before the hearing. He's going to do it after the hearing, and then he's going to submit, that was what I was talking about before, it takes some time to get the approval and consent from Parks Department. But whatever Parks Department is, comes up with is requiring is what we'll provide.
Okay. Okay, so, we, so you'll make the various changes to the submission, but, and provide us with that information, but more importantly, get started on the actual work and installation of the landscaping and so on.
Yeah, we'll do the planting, the striping now, we'll do, we'll seal the parking lot, and we'll do the fencing, and we'll clean up the dumpster area, too.
Okay, good. So you're going to need a couple of months for that.
To do all that work, I think we could do it all by June 1st? Is that, so two months? So June 1st would be, around the beginning of June would be a good time.
So then, how about you submit June 1, and you come back June 21st?
We'd be happy to. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number eight, four dash ninety-eight B.C., 12704, Guy Brewer Boulevard, Queens. Easy for you to say. Should be Guy or Brewer.
Two sister applications that followed each other twenty years ago and continue to follow one another today. It's, this is the same type of application as you just heard a moment ago, where it was a permitted use. In this case, it was a pure R-32 district at the time of the original zoning, at the time of the original variance grant, which subsequently was changed to a C-13. In this case, the site is fully compliant with the parking requirements. It's a substantial difference between the other one that we just heard a moment ago. But there are, in this case, as we called out within our statements, five items, which if the building was constructed today, that would no longer, that wouldn't, the building would not be compliant with. Again, it's the side yard, as you heard a moment ago, where an eight foot would be required. The premises contains a six-foot side yard. The location of the trash enclosure, which is less than fifty, must be at least fifty feet away from any street line, we encroach within that requirement. Landscape buffer of seven feet is what's required, and there are portions that, although they exceed the seven-foot buffer requirement, there are also portions that are less than that. There's a drive aisle with requirement of twenty-two feet. We're very close to meeting that requirement. We're twenty-one feet, seven inches, so we're just five inches short from what's required, but it's already built. And required to have the street trees again, or the open parking area, excuse me, I apologize. In the open parking area, there's a requirement of one caliper of trees for every twenty-five feet of open parking area, street frontage. So with this application, we, I heard your board's comments yesterday. And one of the biggest issues that we saw, and we agree with your board, is replacing the planting. I think that's where this site falls into the biggest area of non-compliance. A lot of the planting has died or was never planted in the first instance, although there is planting there, it certainly does not match verbatim up to the approved plans. So we'd like to be able to install that planting, and we agree to do that before your next hearing.
Okay, but we need a planting plan and with type specified.
Is, if it's, we'd be happy to provide that. If it would satisfy your board, should we submit that first, perhaps?
Yeah.
Before we do the planting? Before we do the planting?
Yeah, because some of the discussion was about why there can't, so you do have this perimeter tree issue, but some of the, some of the planting shown on the original or on the submitted, it doesn't, it looks like you could provide more, you know? So it doesn't seem like you need to be out of compliance with so much of the perimeter.
And we agree, we're happy to do the landscaping. Like I said, within the last application, we've spoken to the owner and they're happy to do all the planting that the board would desire. So with the board's permission, at the end of the hearing, we'd ask for a relatively shorter adjournment to give Frank the opportunity to create a planting schedule, resubmit that to the board, perhaps just solely for your review on that singular issue. Once we secure your blessing on that, the owner will go out and direct people to conduct, to attend to the planting. Also yesterday, he would request a signed analysis form to show compliance under the current zoning, but that wasn't discussed at the beginning. We'd be happy to provide both of that.
And then, we had a question about the brick facade?
Yeah, the original drawings have a note about this should be brick facade, blah, blah, blah. And I'm wondering, was that some sort of a condition, that this be a brick, that the brick be exposed and always be sort of a brick building, which I don't know what your client's plans are for renovating.
There's no, nobody's desiring to re-clad the building. There's no intention to re-clad the structure at all. It's been holding up quite well.
So to the best of knowledge, it was not necessarily a?
To the best of our knowledge, it wasn't necessarily a requirement of the approval.
Because it was just odd that it was on, it was like on every plan.
Now, I read the note that you had spoken about.
And I thought, this might be important because it's on every plan.
So it's a, it's an existing brick wall to remain, basically?
Yes. We're not seeking to make any changes to the structure itself.
How about hours of trash pickup and delivery? It's, was part of the requirements initially?
Yes, we spoke to the carding company yesterday. Refuses routinely picked up from 8:00 P.M. to 7:00 P.M., which is consistent with the board's earlier mandate in the condition of 8:00 A.M. to 10:00 P.M.
So it just fits within that?
Yes, and occurs in the evenings.
And then, let's see. Okay, I think that's it, right? Any other?
We were talking about resurface and restriping also on the site.
If we'd liked, we'd like to, if we can try and accommodate the boards with what we agreed to or what we'd requested at the last hearing on this matter, which is to restripe, repoint, clean up the parking lot.
There's also very, there's, there were several areas that were oil stained. If there's some kind of way of cleaning.
Maybe they could pressure wash those portions and we could come back to you with photos to show you. Again, we are trying to avoid a rather substantial bill for something that will likely occur soon after it's repaved. The rest of the lot is in, is in good condition. I don't know about the oil slicks that you're speaking about, but we'll send a parking lot organization out to the property and see if they can clean it up, everything short of repaving it and resubmit that to the board to see maybe if that would meet with your satisfaction.
If there's cracks or bits?
Yeah, everything will be, we'll deliver the parking lot back in pristine condition other than the actual repaving. That's where a substantial bill is incurred and that's what we're trying to avoid.
I just have a question. With regards to that, regards to that open space along 120th Avenue, it's, it's kind of unfortunate.
On 128?
Yeah, on 128, by the building.
Yes.
It's kind of unfortunate that that space is completely a wasteland.
Trash.
And if there is any way to activate that and make it attractive, and since that, that unlike the, you know, Basley, this is a, this street leads right into a residential.
Into a residential, yeah, no, it's all single-family homes.
Especially, I think the landscaping here should be treated in a way that?
The landscaping plan, I think we can come back to you, maybe some kind of, what I'm envisioning is a, maybe build it up a little bit with a little bit of terrain in it, just to sort of create, I understand what you're trying to create, just a more aesthetically pleasing visual entrance to the community, which will serve Walgreens well as well and reflects positively.
And do you have a security lighting or say?
Yes.
Along that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, the building has security lighting all around.
I mean, that's another part, the trash enclosure is so close to the street there that may, I don't know whether the landscaping can, you know, be denser around there. It doesn't look like you have a lot of room to work.
With this one, it's the same as the last one, we'd like the opportunity to develop a landscaping plan and come back to the board quickly.
Good, good, okay. Good, all right. Are there any speakers on this, including fire department? Okay, so we could do this in the same schedule that you'll, oh, so this one?
Yeah, this one though, with the plant, this, actually I misspoke. The last one, I think the board didn't just require, didn't ask of us to submit a landscaping schedule ahead of time.
Right.
Would you want to reopen that one and, and do the same for that as you would like for this maybe, and we give you a landscaping schedule for both of them ahead of time?
That one was more, I think fill-in.
The other one had a landscaping plan with a few dead bushes here and there.
Okay, so on this one, if you could give us maybe three weeks to submit to you a landscaping plan, and then we'll come back on the remainder of the issues.
Okay. Well, you can come back with as much of the submission as you can.
That'd be fine.
You're obviously not going to be able to come back with having restripped and improved the surface and stuff like that. Okay. So then, three weeks would be, so can you make, I think you can do the April 26 hearing with a submission on April 6? Does that do soon?
April 6 for a landscaping plan.
Does that work?
Yes.
April 6?
The architect's just nodded to me that he's okay with that.
Okay.
So April 6 submit and April 26, was that the date?
Yeah, April 26. And the landscaping plan, really, it specifies the number and type of vegetation, okay?
We'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Item number 923804 BZ, 62 couper square, Manhattan.
Good morning, Jessica Rubenstein, on behalf of Rothkirk, Rothkirk Inspector.
Good morning.
We attended yesterday's review session regarding the 2015 fire department sprinkler test. The building has a single central sprinkler system. The test submitted pertains to the entire sprinkler system and was provided by the building superintendent.
Okay.
Regarding the 2005 acoustical recommendations, those were implemented and proof of that will be submitted under the next submission.
Okay.
Regarding the question about the TCO, the architect will address that as well in the next submission.
Okay.
The plans will be revised to say that the sprinkler and the FDNY notes have been installed. And regarding the notification to the neighbors, notification was completed pursuant to the board's rule, so no neighbors were not specifically notified for this hearing, however, they can be notified for the next hearing.
Yeah, that would be great. If you could just like post in the lobby?
Sure.
That would probably be the easiest, or in the mailbox, or how, I don't know how that building works.
We can do that.
Okay, and?
I believe that was it.
Okay, great. Are there any speakers on this? Okay.
We would like to submit in about three weeks if possible.
Okay, that's fine. So what are we looking at? So that would be April, so if you submitted for, let me see, for 26? Yeah. So April 26, oh, in three weeks, so I don't think that works. One, two, three, four. April 13 submission?
That'd be great.
Or, or May 3 continuation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appeals calendar, decision items, 3515A, 2001 Bartow Avenue, the Bronx. Okay, with this one, we're going to reopen because the department, both sides actually, but Department of Buildings initiated with additional materials. And we'd like to have the Department of Buildings go first because they are the ones who reopen the argument so that a appellant can respond.
They need a minute to set up the PowerPoint.
Okay, and everybody needs to set up the PowerPoint. And I think it just makes more sense because this DOB made the initial argument, then the appellant can respond.
Sorry guys, I didn't know.
Okay.
So time, motion to reopen?
Oh yeah, motion to reopen, right, right, as long as we're hanging out. Tony's talking.
Motion to re, a motion to reopen?
Right, so.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hanksen?
Aye.
Commissioner Alton Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
There we go. Now we can talk.
You know?
Now we can talk.
Okay. It should be there.
Will it be able to raise that ground?
Sure.
This is one I need, Carlo.
I actually wanted. I do. Oh, we need our, our audiovisual. Oh, yeah, while they're doing this, a five-minute break.
Excuse me, sir.
Why is he driving, answering?
Yes.
Not yet. Little while. Amsterdam is in Brussels. Amsterdam is in, I don't know.
Camera's still on, everybody.
Oh yeah. Cameras on for five minutes? You want to turn it off? Click off on the camera.
Click the off, remote off button?
No, I don't have to remove it.
Yeah, he's, he's, he didn't cancel his trip.
I wouldn't cancel my trip to Amsterdam. They haven't, if I hadn't done anything, I would piss somebody off.
Oh.
Whereas Brussels, Belgium is doing a lot. So I wasn't surprised. I mean, of course, I wasn't surprised.
No, that's true.
Their security people are just like, can you, he protects a building, building wearing an explosive vest. It's the airport. He always walks through a security outfit. It's because of the, it's because of the way the airport is configured. It's like two barges, right? It looks like this. And here, it's like the big hub, so you can take the train, you can drive a car. This was inside the terminal. What is it? Security, where a lot of airports, you have to put your bags through a detector to get in the building. There are flaws. You don't have to do this with those air. You come in and then you decide, I need to go to A or I need to go to B. When you cross that mark, that's where you go through the security. When you cross this mark, you go through the security. This central area is just filled with people.
Absolutely. It's a point of the security. So how can you do it? The answer is through the security.
Absolutely. Absolutely. You can't get in the building because you can't go from there. Through the security. I know. But Brussels, I mean, I've been, I've been to the airport.
Yeah, no, but I'm just commenting. Obviously, across the airports, I mean, our own airports will go through security.
All right, we can go. It's ridiculous. Do you have the audios?
Oh yeah, yes.
My what? I know it's on. Okay, we're back on, mics on? You checked that the right people in the picture. Good? Okay. Your mics back on? Your mics are on? Okay. Okay, we're back on, 3515A, 2001 Bartow Avenue. We already reopened.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Commissioners, Andrew Wallace from the Department of Buildings. I attended yesterday's review session and would like to incorporate responses to the comments and questions that were made there with some slides that were prepared prior to yesterday's, yesterday's review session, but I think can be instructive on it. The first issue, one of the issues that was dealt with yesterday that the chair raised was the issue of structure, and I think that's what a lot of the slides will focus on. And so to move forward to the first slide, the definition of a sign, which we're all familiar with, but just very important to, to note the importance of structure, that a sign is representation, that is a structure that is used to announce direct attention or to advertise. to, we're focused on some of the comments that were raised yesterday as well in terms of sort of the department's interpretation of this statute, of this, of this section and applying it to other examples that have, that have come before the department. So one that was included in our last submission and was also discussed yesterday was the History Channel at 20 Bruckner Boulevard in the Bronx.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Thank you.
And this came to the department's attention as a request from an applicant, not this applicant, but another applicant for ZR1 determination on a pre-existing, non-conforming advertising sign. And in the applicant's submission, they described this sign as including a structure and also multiple elements. And you can see what the elements were that the applicant described, the letter H and words, the History Channel, and also a time and temperature display at the bottom. And you can also see both a front and rear photograph. Excuse me just a moment. Front and rear photograph, excuse me, front and rear photograph showing the structure, one structure upon which the multiple elements, the representation of the sign is placed and are placed, and that is what does the announcement or the advertising. So in this case, both the applicant that presented a sign that was on a structure and had multiple elements, the applicant understood that it was one sign. When the department reviewed this request for determination, the department did not take issue that a sign could be, could include, could be comprised of multiple elements. And if we look back at our definition, there's nothing in the definition that deals, that mentions or touches on the concept of elements, whether a sign is a single element or multiple elements. It's a representation on a structure that announces, directs attention or advertises. So there was a, an agreement, an understanding both of what the sign, of what comprised this sign. Another example, again, from an applicant, not the applicant today, but another applicant regarding a pre-existing, non-conforming sign as well, accessory use this time, not advertising. This is actually, the applicant identified it as being for two signs, which the department did not question. This is in the Hotel Empire in, near Lincoln Center, the Upper West Side of Manhattan. And you can see that there's, there are identical signs, north facing and south facing, on the roof of the hotel, announcing the hotel, Hotel Empire. Similar to our History Channel, where the sign, just deal with one of the signs for purposes of this discussion, sign is a representation, a representation, the words Hotel Empire, it's on a structure, you can see the structural framework, and it's used to announce or direct attention to Hotel Empire. As well at, you know, similar to the History Channel application, in this application, the applicant identified this, this sign, this one sign, as having multiple elements. The word hotel and the word empire, you know, placed on the structure.
But you said this was two signs or one sign?
Two, two identical signs.
Oh, two, two, in different locations, totally different locations.
So Hotel Empire is one sign and then there's another Hotel Empire, that's a second sign?
Correct, correct.
You need to be clear with that, okay?
It's just not clear from the photo.
Absolutely, I'm sorry. So we have one, and they almost, you know, can see, you know, for back, front and rear view, so that, that's a rear view facing north in this case. And this is the identical sign facing south, Hotel Empire.
Okay. Part of it is, it's a little hard to see in both the photograph and on that because it's a aerial, it's just, to point it out.
So they're on two different frontages, two different street frontages.
Correct, correct. So, and another point I'd like to make on this, in both the request for determination in History Channel and in Hotel Empire, the applicant did not, the applicant did describe the signs as being comprised of multiple elements, but they did not mention the word or concept of separation between these. And that's been a concept that, you know, we've discussed a great deal here, the 12-inch separation between the LED panels. And if we go back again to our definition, just as the definition is silent as to whether a sign must be a single element or multiple element? a sign must be a single element or multiple element, the definition is also silent as to how definition, excuse me, how separations would influence a sign. So reading that, if the sign is pictorial representation, the writing, on a structure, announcing, directing attention, or advertising, regardless of the separations that may be within that sign, if that representation is on a structure and announces, directs attention, it's a sign. And that was understood by the applicant in History Channel, it was understood by the department when we granted the determination for History Channel, as well as for Hotel Empire. Now, the Board did ask about Bronx Terminal Market yesterday, and I do recall it was also raised at, at the last hearing. My apologies for the oversight in that, it was not intentional. When we prepared the, the report, the most recent submission, it was simply felt that the applications that we cited were more on point to, to 2001 Barto Avenue. However, after yesterday's session, we did look at the Bronx Terminal Market, and there is a sign at 651 River Avenue. I apologize, I don't have, have a slide for it, but it shows somewhat similar to what an arrangement for Barto could be, where there is signage that displays the establishments at the mall, at the Bronx Terminal Mall. And in researching this, we see that this was, that this sign was granted by City Planning Commission in 2005 pursuant to a special permit to modify the zoning regarding the signage. So the, the report does not speak to if this is one sign or multiple signs. They modified the, modified, issued a special permit to modify the zoning. So that's
Well, in the department's opinion, would, it's all on one structure, it's pretty much very similar to Barto Avenue. I happen to pass it a lot, so I've had it at the occasion of looking at it. So just wondering how the department would have analyzed that.
If City Planning was the one who decided, the OB didn't analyze, so we can't use it.
No, but if it falls into their analysis, does it fall in, would, would you agree that it falls into the analysis that you've laid out for us in terms of it being on one structure? If you were to look at it, you would have looked at it as one whole
Yes, Commissioner.
Whole sign, so to speak, as opposed to individual panels?
I would agree with that. Yes, it fits the definition as a representation on a structure, one structure, and it announces or directs attention.
And I understand that, you know, City Planning has, has sort of special powers in this regard. I'm just interested in whether or not you follow the same, you would have followed the same sort of analysis.
I believe applying this definition, that we would have followed that, that we would have found that to be one sign.
Could you speak to the accessory sign in Bay Plaza?
Oh, yeah, that, the deal sign?
The huge sign, it's like when you get off of I-95 to go into Bay Plaza, there is a huge display with separate panels for each store that's located in Bay Plaza, but I guess it's on Bay Plaza property.
Right, it's right by the Checkers Restaurant. It's like over there, if you can tell, it's on the, let's see, it's on the
It's pretty prominent.
Western portion of that zoning lot.
I'm afraid, Commissioner, without, I'm not familiar with that sign at this moment, so I'd be reluctant to provide an opinion right now. Certainly, you know, with the address, you know, provide more information.
Presumably, that you, the department would have looked at that one. I don't believe that that was under City Planning.
Okay.
But just to be clear, the, the other sign was a subject of City Planning, so the OB never looked at it, so no one can use it as form of precedent either for the appellant or for DOB because the question was never posed. So I think we need to look maybe at the Bay Plaza sign as an example of how DOB treated it.
I don't have the address, Bay Plaza.
Well, this is the same area. It's the whole Bay Plaza Mall. They have a sign that's huge, and it's got the panels at every single store, and it's on the zoning lot.
And it's adjacent to the highway.
The only difference probably is it's not a digital sign.
Okay.
You actually can see it if you, if you're Google mapping Barto Avenue. If you come down and actually just turn and swivel along Barto, you can actually then see it. And that's what caught my attention.
And so, and the purpose of my question is to see if there is a standardized way of looking at these multi-panel displays that would at least support your contention that if it's on one structure, it's going to be considered one sign.
Okay. We can research that and get back to you if that's all right?
Right, because my concern is that Department of Buildings is just responding to all of our questions and kind of fashioning a standard as we're going along. And that, that's a concern for me.
Understood that, Commissioner, I understand. And hopefully, you know, with preparing these slides, you know, we've shown some, you know, the consistency in both, you know, with the depart, with, with the industry's understanding of how the sign, how the definition can be applied to, we don't have multiple LED panels in these cases, but we do have multiple elements of the sign, that the industry understands that a sign can be comprised of multiple elements with separations, and the department understands that as well.
Counselor, sorry, just a quick question. Does the department have any examples of signage where on a single structures, there's disparate content that's been considered a sign? So right, the History Channel sign, those elements are, are related. And obviously, the Board isn't looking at content, but does the department have an example of where on one structure there has been unrelated content that has been considered a single sign? And I don't know that you'd have the answer now, but if you could.
And that's why the Commissioners are asking about shopping malls where that it's exactly that case, and that was the case for this one sign that's a subject of a CPC approval, right? But there must be others.
Okay. I can say that, you know, after the last session, I did speak with our sign enforcement unit and also our sort of like data management people as well, and it gets a little bit complicated in that we don't have, our PW1 applications don't sort or ask for information regarding monopole applications, and nor do they make a distinction, at least in the form, regarding if it's multiple elements, multiple images, or a single element or single images. So if somebody has a, you know, anecdotally knows, oh, yes, I know this one, you know, this is similar on point, we can do further research on that. So that's, you know, how we, you know, in our research, getting to History Channel and Hotel Empire.
It's fairly standard on the shopping malls that there are these kind of gang signs. So it's kind, it'd be pretty easy, it seems to me, to just look up the word shopping mall, even on a business search, but, and, and see what the sign permits are for them because now that I look at the one for Bay Plaza, it's just a gang sign that has every store, like a strip sign for every single store, and, you know, it seems to me that would have been treated as one sign. I actually don't know how they would look at it as separate signs. So I think that's actually quite helpful. I assume that's a permitted sign and it didn't need CPC.
Bay Plaza.
Bay Plaza, yeah.
So with that background from the definition and also prior examples that show both the industry's understanding of this definition and the department's understanding and determinations regarding this definition, we'll turn to the current application, 2001 Barto Avenue. And the next slide that's shown on the screen is, was provided by the applicant, and it was provided, and there's ZRV1, it was also provided in the applicant's submission. The department understands that this is the monopole structure that, upon which the representations will be placed, and that's the, where will then direct attention, advertise, so that will be the sign. The Board will note that according to our records, we have an application, one, an application filed for one structure, job number's there, and the description is simply direct structure or directly illuminated signage. So there's the monopole, front-facing, and also side-facing. So looking at this, and I realize that it's a drawing rather than a photograph, but I think it's quite similar to our structures in History Channel and Hotel Empire, where you have a grid-like framework, structure, upon which elements that represent will be placed. Again, both front and rear view at History Channel, front and rear view at Hotel Empire, moving to the structure, the monopole structure for 2001 Barto Avenue. One item that, you know, was addressed yesterday, Madam Chair, that you asked about was the understanding of surface area and specifically the second and third paragraphs. And I think that, this, this slide may, might be a good opportunity to look at that, where if there are signs that have this arrangement back-to-back on a single structure, that the surface area of only one of them is included. And that, if we go back to the definition, that does make sense because part of the definition is representation or, and announcement. So if we move to our drawing, if we have an individual standing here, they're only able to see the representation or the announcement that's on this side. It's physically impossible for them to see it on this side.
That doesn't work. The sign is viewable by multiple people simultaneously, that the standard isn't one person looking at the sign, but I don't think you need to break up the definition of sign. There's another set of instructions that has to do with surface area, and they're clear, you only count the one sign face. You don't have to go to the definition over here and figure out how in the world they got there, they got there, that's the instructions we're following, right? So, yeah, don't assume there's one sign viewer, that doesn't work, there are millions of sign viewers simultaneously, right?
Understood.
Thousands.
So moving along, that this, this shows the element from the definition of the structure, the monopole structure, again, similar to History Channel and Hotel Empire. And now turning to the representation, this is the representation that has been, one possibility of representation that's been provided by, by the applicant. And we can see that multiple elements, just like here, just like with History Channel and with Hotel Empire, the elements that are on the structure that, in this case, advertise. Again, returning to the discussion of the separation, there are 12 inches separation between these panels, between these elements, but again, if we return to our definition, the representation on the structure announcing or advertising, it's irrelevant whether there are separations. The separations between those elements don't hinder or prevent this from being considered a sign, just as it didn't, one sign, just as it didn't, just as those separations did not in History Channel and in Hotel Empire. I hope what this, you know, has shown is, you know, there was, you know, concerns yesterday about questions of inconsistent application, I hope that this has shown is that the department and the industry understand the definition, and it has been understood and applied by the industry and the department in the past, past examples. And based on that application of the definition, based on those past determinations, the department's review of the current applications, the current arrangement, applying the definition, representation on the structure, advertising, it's a sign regardless of whether it's a single element or multiple elements, and regardless of the separate, if it is multiple elements, regardless of the separations between those multiple elements. One other specific point that was raised yesterday was about the deal sign in Brooklyn, and I apologize, I don't have the photograph of it in my presentation, but I was in the applicant's presentation, and in taking a look at the photograph, you can see that there's a shadow and signifying that those two elements are on separate planes. Furthermore, that, those, those signs are attached to, they're not, unlike Barto Avenue or History Channel or Hotel Empire, they're not attached to their own separate standalone structure, they're attached to the building. And in fact, check this with, with the plan examiner as well, that the, the top element of, the top sign, the deals, is on a, what the examiner described as a track structure, a track attachment off of the facade of the building, and the lower sign with the color, with their slogan, is directly attached to the facade of the building. So they're on separate planes, the facade of the building, so it's, it's a, it's a distinct situation from Barto or from History Channel or, or Hotel Empire.
So, you know, careful there with your separate planes, because I'll bet you that the History Channel sign, those individual images are in separate planes, because that requires huge precision on the part of the sign installer to get them all in the same plane. So I would stay away from the separate plane argument, plus there's a lot of signs that are three-dimensional signs where they're completely in separate planes if you're reading just the surface.
They look like there are, there are different mounting mechanisms, to me. One is mounted on a bracket, which is attached to the building, one is a plaque, which is attached to a building, they're different mechanisms.
Which one are you talking about?
The deal sign, yeah.
Deals, yes.
So you're saying one structure, one sign?
Correct.
Basically.
Yes, Commissioner.
That's the determining factor, no matter where you go in the city, no matter what type of sign, one structure, one sign.
Yes, Commissioner.
So if it's multiple structures, and I asked this question yesterday, multiple structures in, at the same site depicting sort of the same, you know, logo, whatever, but on multiple structures, you would then, under, following your analysis, you would then only analyze each one separately depending on whether it was on a separate structure? So you might come out with a different outcome than if it was all on one structure.
The framework
Can I take this further? Yeah. Let's say we have this continuous street frontage along this highway of a side, and we have the, the signs that are 200 feet, that are set very far away, and behind that there's another layer of signage, each one of them set away, and the one sign that's even further away, 400 feet away, is of a larger size because of the distance it can maintain. But when you look at it completely horizontally, because of the overlapping of this, of the of the signs, they can effectively read as one long, continuous sign, but they're each separated by maybe 20 feet, 20 feet, 20 feet apart with another row behind it which is staggered. How would, I was hoping that the drawing, the box would look at this whole thing, kind of say, well, this all, because one could have a continuous image running that entire length of 1,000 feet.
But I don't know how you get there. I think you just designed a brilliant sign. It's totally legal.
Could it answer the question? Let's not miss the answer.
Of course. The focus in our determinations is, is on the structure. One structure equals one sign. That said, I think, you know, the hypothetical that you've described really would require an examination by a plan examiner to, to see the plan.
I mean, same, same setup, same sign, right? The same, I have one monopole and I have all of these things. The same, I have one monopole and I have all of these things. Now, I've, I've gotten your determination, and I say, okay, so I'm going to now break it up in some way, separate structures for, you know, four or five-
27 monopoles.
27 monopoles, yeah, to take it to its, you know-
Expensive sign.
Total, total extension, 27 monopoles. So, now you're telling me that I can actually do that, because my, my analysis is now going to show that I can probably do something like that, and it still reads the same way.
Again, you know, I'm, I am reluctant, I hope you all understand, I'm not trying to evade the question, but just without a, you know, a plan in front of me to commit to it, but yes, the principle that we hope to advise the board of is the crucial nature of structure to the understanding of the sign. And, you know, when we look at that definition and we see sign is a structure, that's what we're, we're focusing on, and that was our focus in looking at History Channel and in, in Hotel Empire, and that was our focus in looking at Barto. There's one structure, there's a single monopole structure, all of the representation, all of the elements are on that one structure, on that one monopole, regardless that they're, that they have separations, regardless that they're multiple images, it's on that one structure, it is one sign.
Right. I just want to point out also, with the exception of the C-7 district, no other district would allow you to have 27 gigantic signs.
And you need to have a big site for that.
Yes, and a huge site, so this may be the only one in New York that could do that, right? Okay. Is there anything else you wanted to say?
Just want to make sure that I've covered all of the points from yesterday, you know, given an explanation on Terminal, Bronx Terminal Market, and we'll look at the Bay Plaza and also go back and try to do more, look at, at shopping malls. Hope I've dealt with the question regarding the distinction with the deal sign in Brooklyn, and-
And you've clarified your position, one structure, one sign.
Correct. And I hope that this, these slides and this presentation has been helpful in seeing that there has been a consistency in the department's understanding of what a sign is based on the definition, its application when the, when the industry comes to the, comes to the department. And it's also been raised, you know, at some of the other hearings, that if Barto is not allowed, there'll be a, a lack of understanding within the industry. I think the applications that were submitted, the determinations submitted for History Channel and for Hotel Empire, where that applicant identified this as one sign with multiple elements, is fairly good proof that the industry understands this, that a sign may be, have, have multiple elements, but still be one sign. So, I'm happy to take. Any other questions at this time?
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Commissioners?
Appellant?
There it is.
Right. There it is.
I remember that sign.
Just leave it here.
I was just there on Saturday.
There they go. That's not, is that the Bay Mall?
That's the Bay Plaza.
Because I found a different one, there's several of those signs.
The city's crawling with malls.
No, it's big.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Commissioners, thank you, Chair.
State your name.
Mitch Corby. I'm an attorney and an urban planner with a law from Herrick Feinstein, joined by my two colleagues from Herrick, Arthur Ha, who's an urban planner, and McCahey, who's an attorney, and playing the role of Vanna White, Michael Davis, who promised not to curtsey. Michael's with our, our applicant. You know, we heard new terms this morning, I'm anxiously scribbling them down, elements. Elements doesn't show up anywhere in the zoning resolution. The notion of a shadow doesn't show up in the zoning resolution. Even the word panels is not in the zoning resolution. We don't really think the department's been inconsistent. In fact, for quite some time, almost as long as I've been around, which is the same age as a zoning resolution, the department has been generally consistent, consistent with three, it's shocking that I'm the same age as zoning, but the 1961-
I was thinking 1916, and that was kind of, yeah, really, okay.
So, the department has been fairly consistent, except when it comes to our situation, and it's been pointed out, C-7 is most unusual, but because it's most unusual, doesn't mean we're to be treated differently. So, what I'd like to do is touch on all the issues that came up yesterday. We saw the YouTube video a couple of times, some of us saw it three or four times, just to make sure we understood the video of yesterday's executive session. So, we understood precisely where we're going here. So, you know, we can talk about this maybe at the very beginning, we obviously have this in our papers, there are multiple permits for the Bay Plaza sign, it's in our submission. Each one of these is a sign, each one of these was permitted that way by the department, and I also, of course, have hopefully a, the surface area of a sign described. The structure is not the sign. There's only one place, or two places in the city where the structure is part of the sign. The zoning resolution calls out when you count the structure in the Midtown Special District. Specifically says, and we're passing this out, specifically says, you count the structure or elements of the structure, if you will, in the Midtown Special District. You also do that, I think, in the Penn Plaza Special District and maybe one other place. So, the ZR says here, this is when you count the structure, and all other times, you don't. All right, so why don't we start with some of our, our displays? I want to also get to this notion of spaces between, a lot of discussion about the space between, and a lot of dialogue about the History Channel and the Empire, Empire sign. So, with regard to the History Channel, these, of course, are very old, non-conforming signs, and I find this sort of instructive or interesting, the department would take the doctrine of non-conforming signs and graft it onto this argument as a new theory, but let's go with it, because we're trying to, to work through this. What the department does, I guess I can take this out, right? What the department does here is draw a very strict envelope around each of these, each of these, okay, in an effort to put them in a sort of straitjacket, if you will, for the purpose of determining what happens next with this non-conforming sign. Now, what happened next could be a number of things, but you are limited to a conclusion of a certain amount of surface area. Now, note, the department does not count the space in between, they don't count the structure, the department provides an envelope within which you must conform when you put up the next sign, or frankly, the next couple of signs. They're not even saying how many signs can happen next, they're simply giving you a surface area within which you must stand. And again, they don't count, right, the spaces in between. You're not supposed to count the spaces in between, right? It's this tightly controlled, and it makes sense, it's a non-conforming use, which you don't want to get bigger, you don't want to get more extreme. With regard to the Empire Hotel, quite interesting that the, the new sign is a, is an electronic sign. The old sign was, but notice how it's smaller, it's been shrunk, because you don't count the space. I think they applied for two signs, and we're told, no, you only get, you only get one?
Specifically, they excluded the space.
State your name.
Sorry, Michael Davis.
And you have to take the mic when you-
Sorry about that, I knew with this. Specifically, the spaces here were excluded, and so, when the department put its submission in, it talked about how they draw a box around the entirety of all these graphic elements. But these weren't a single installation, per se, these were really a grouping of individual elements as part of a sign that was never permitted, because it predated the resolution. And so, when they came up with the surface areas, they excluded all the spaces, and those calculations are shown here, and each resulting single sign, which was applied for as a single sign, then got smaller.
Right, and the department tells us in their submission-
Sorry, state your name again, so we know.
Oh, Mitchell Corby, sorry.
Okay.
The department tells us in their submission that they draw a big box, and then later on in a footnote, and of course, in the ZRD itself, they show that they don't draw a, a big box. Measures the surface area of the sign by drawing a box around the entire graphic message, no. It's not around the entire graphic message.